To order the city council meeting of March 12th, 2025, it's 6:30 PM. And we're going to get started here. Vice Mayor Klein will read the Nisanon tribe recognition.
We acknowledge that the Nisanon people are still here among us today, though nearly invisible. We understand that we are on Nisanon land that was never ceded and the original tribal families have yet to recover from the near genocide of their people. As a resident or visitor in Nisanon land, we support the Nevada City Rancheria Nisanon Tribe in efforts to stabilize their people as well as their campaign to restore federal recognition.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Fleming, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was a fine job by the birthday boy, so thank you. No, no, I'll leave it alone now. We got it in the, we got it in the record, so, all right.
Let the record show he's here on his birthday.
But, yeah, that is something, yes. So if our clerk of the board would call the roll, please.
Councilmember Cece.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Here.
And Mayor Peterson.
Present.
All members present.
And Nancy Agien will be, will be sitting in Dean's place tonight. I hope I said that right, and thank you for joining us. And we're really impressed you made the trek in this weather to us today, so, so, all right. So adoption of the agenda, I am going to propose that we move item 10, which is the consideration of the appointment of Diana Arvex as Public Arts Commissioner to the front. I understand she's at home watching it, she wasn't feeling well, couldn't be here tonight, so we could get it done and then she can turn it off. Unless she wants to hang around and watch the rest of this.
She doesn't want to. I'm going to answer for her.
Gianna.
But it is spelled with a D.
Spelled with a D, pronounced with a G.
Gianna.
Gianna, okay, got it. Sorry, Gianna, hopefully it only takes me once to get it right. So thank you, but that's a proposal I'm making to change. Any other changes to the agenda? All right. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda with the change you mentioned.
We have a first from Vice Mayor Klein and a second from Councilmember Cece. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cece.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, public comment. We have no presentations tonight, we'll move straight to public comment. Government Code Section 59454.3 provides any member of the public may address the city council on any matter not on the agenda that is in the subject matter of the jurisdiction. Nice to see you, it's been a while.
Yes.
I've missed you, I actually really have missed you.
I've missed you all too, very much. Hi, so I'm here to talk about the urgent need for community protection of our immigrant population here. Mass deportations are currently happening and, you know, they say it's targeting people with criminal histories, but in reality, it's targeting everyone. Trump administration is expanding detention facilities, reopening closed ones for family detention, as well as converting military bases like Fort Bliss in Texas for the detention of 10,000 individuals, as well as really inhumane conditions in detention in the Darien Gap in Panama and Guantanamo Bay. Immigrant families in Nevada County are already living in fear due to the administration's escalated enforcement taxes, surprise raids, and mass arrests. ICE agents are showing up at schools, hospitals, courthouses, and detaining individuals without warrants and creating environments where immigrants are afraid to leave their homes.
I'm sorry about that.
The Trump administration is not just deporting undocumented people, it is also criminalizing basically everyone, legal residents, anyone of color. So, you know, Nevada County's economy is really dependent on immigrant labor for agriculture, hospitality, caregiving, and many other industries. Fear of deportation is pushing people in this county into the shadows, leading to lower school attendance, economic hardship, and breakdown of trust between immigrant communities and our local government. I'm really hoping the city can declare Nevada City a safe and welcoming community that will not cooperate with ICE, ensure that local law enforcement does not insist in any federal immigration enforcement, can invest time and money into legal aid, rapid response networks, and know your rights education for immigrant families, publicly condemn ICE's harmful enforcement tactics, and call for an end to mass deportation, and ensure that our schools, hospitals, and public institutions remain safe spaces from immigration enforcement. There's a lot of people in the community already working on this. It's having a pretty massive effect on the immigrant community, which is much larger than you would assume here, but we would love to collaborate with the city. You know, we have the ability in this room to come out publicly, make people feel safe from our relative safety, and we should do everything we can to be prepared. You know, there's already been instances in this county of CBP as well as ICE, so we need to be proactive and get together. So you guys know how to get in touch, please reach out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Zach.
Thanks, Zach. Other public comment? Seeing none, we will close public. Oh, please, go ahead, Ward. Wade, that word, Wade?
Hello. I, William Lee Strickland, equals God, New World Inner Order is in effect. I, William Lee Strickland, King God, am federal police, in charge of political global economy. I pay in crypto, fill in with Bitcoin. I'm not in it for the money, I'm in it for the glory. I love you all. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, I love you too. All right, so we are going to move to the consent agenda, and I'm looking for a motion to approve and a second to approve the consent calendar.
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
A motion by Councilmember Fleming, a second by Vice Mayor Klein on the consent agenda. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cece.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Sure.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, and so as, as we modified the agenda, we will move to item 10, consideration of the appointment of Gianna Arvex as Public Arts Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, Gianna can't be with us tonight, and her boss at the public arts, or at the Nevada County Arts Council was going to try to make it in, but I think the weather's holding her up as well. So hopefully Gianna's watching at home and then can exit stage left. In February of 2024, just a little over a year ago, we had our first Public Arts Commission meeting, and the commission's made up, as you know, but for folks at home, seven members that are all appointed by the council. And there's one youth commissioner, there's two at-large commissioners, and then there's four members that represent external stakeholder groups, which are the Nevada County Historical Society, Nevada County Arts Council, the Nevada City Chamber of Commerce, and the Nevada City Rancheria Nisanon. The city council appointed Eliza Tudor to serve representing the Nevada County Arts Council. She is just busy with, you know, all things that have to do with the Arts Council and has, is intending to step down, or has notified us that she's going to step down, and the Arts Council is recommending that Gianna Arvex take her place. Gianna is taking Heather Heckler's place as the Grass Valley Nevada City Cultural District Manager, which is held under the umbrella of the Arts Council. It'll be a good synergy, we work with her already, and even though she's new to the position and new back to the Arts Council, she, prior to her time working on this year's Wild and Scenic, worked for the Arts Council for some time prior, so have no doubt that she'd be well-integrated there. If you appoint her tonight, she'll serve the remainder of the four-year term that ends January 31st, 2028, and she'd be sworn in at the April 2nd, 2025 Public Arts Commission meeting, which is coming up next month. And with that, we'd request that you would make that appointment.
Any public comment? Seeing none, back to the council, any comment?
Yeah, I just want to say I've worked with Gianna in her capacity at the Arts Council, although in a different role, and she is wonderfully competent and aware of all things arts council and related in Nevada City. I think she'll be a great addition, and I will forever be a fan of some of our elder electeds and appointees making way for younger folks to fill the spot.
Thank you.
If it's good enough, I do not know the woman, I've read what I've read, and I think it sounds like a fine woman. Danielle believes in her, I believe in her.
Wow, there you go.
Oh, all right.
No comment.
I worked with Gianna when I was at the Arts Council, and she's one of the most effective and capable people I've ever known. And she cares passionately about the arts and this community, and therefore, I think, is a perfect fit for this position, and we are lucky to have her.
Like the perfect qualifications for me. So looking for a motion and a second?
I move we approve this appointment.
I second that.
So, motion by Vice Mayor Klein, second by Councilmember Fernandez. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cece.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Congratulations, Gianna. All right, so we will then open the public hearing. We are at, conduct the public hearing, the city's fiscal year 2024-2025 proposed mid-year budget by consideration of Resolution Number 2025-07, a resolution of the city council, the city in Nevada City adopting fiscal year 2024-2025 mid-year budget. We're going to open the public hearing, and we should inform Eliza that we just made the approval of the, and we moved it up so as to not to drag it out. It was, it was a love fest and it's all done, so.
Am I allowed to make public comment?
Go ahead, make it quick. We're into the next item.
I'm, I'm so delighted that Gianna Arvex will be coming in to serve the commission in my place. It's perfect because she's new in her role as GVNC Cultural District Program Manager. And in general, it's fantastic that the council is represented on the commission, and it will allow me to sort of be more, more of a, God, I'm so out of breath.
How'd you do more of that?
I couldn't find a parking space. But just to say, this never has it been more important, the idea of public-private partnerships in the arts. So it's going to be great, it'll free me up to be more of a thought partner in those ways with the city, so thank you all for your understanding, and I can't wait for Gianna to take this role and do great work. Thank you.
Thank you, Eliza.
We'll go back to our public hearing, and we'll hear from Brittany and Steve.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Tonight, we're here to present to you the 2425 mid-year budget. On June 12th, 2024, the 2425 budget was adopted by the city, and this review is meant to forecast changes in revenue and expenditures that may exceed the original estimates for the remainder of the budget fiscal, fiscal year. So I would like to bring.
Come on, come on.
Take it out of the presentation. Take it out of the presentation.
That's the audit.
Hey.
That's the audit.
Aw, shit.
Sorry.
So close.
Sorry.
So not the LSL one?
Correct.
Oh, it's dark skies. Bear with me a second, please.
There we are.
How did that?
It's a folder.
Yeah, it's really good, but. The puck is so fascinating.
Is that correct?
No. This one. It is, look at it.
Yep.
Really look at it. This one. Do it.
This one.
It's my baby. You can see her little legs.
It's like a switch, huh?
Yeah, I don't know. There must be, I think it got.
There we go.
In there?
Yep.
We can't pass it.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, so we would like to present the mid-year budget review. In our budget philosophy, the revenues and expenditures are balanced on a current basis, and we, we also include our capital improvement program, which is an emphasis on streets, roads, and sidewalks. This next slide is going to show you our general revenue significant resource items and how they increased or decreased. And as you can see, the property tax has increased by 16,315, or 1%, based on our original estimates. The property tax in lieu of is going to increase by 6,378, or 1%. Our sales tax is going to decline slightly, down by 8,382. And then our franchise revenue is going to increase by 3,449, which is about 18.6%. One of our general fund significant revenue resource items is our insurance proceeds. As you know, the Public Works Barn is being rebuilt right now, so we expect to have expenditures that equal to the 432,000 that we're going to get reimbursed from them as well. Some other significant revenues, which are not necessarily tied to the general revenue, are gas tax, which is going to go up by 7,698. Measure C is going to go down just slightly, a decrease of 4,793. And our new Measure C 2024, which just went into effect July of 2024, is going to increase by 257,000. Measure M's going to go down just slightly, by 11,516. And those are significant revenue sources, and then Steve's going to talk to you about our expenditures.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. So we do have two appropriations we're asking for approval this evening for, one of which is a $15,000 appropriation related to a mental health and wellness grant that the city has received. We're recognizing the revenue as well, so this is a net effect of zero in the miscellaneous grants fund. And then also, the city was awarded a cannabis equity program grant, and one of the requirements is that there has to be a city match of $10,000. So we're asking for a supplemental appropriation from the general fund this evening to accomplish Also, as part of your, the requested action tonight is setting up what's called an enterprise fund for the Miners Foundry. This is similar to the sewer and water funds that the city has. We're also asking that the city appropriate $150,000 from the general fund to this new Miners Foundry Enterprise Fund as a short-term loan until we wrap our arms around the Miners Foundry finances as we go through this transition period. And as Brittany mentioned, we're recognizing 432,000 of insurance proceeds based upon $432,000 worth of work related to the Public Works Barn rebuild, and that's all general fund monies. So ultimately, the net positive effect of all of these changes on your general fund is $271,000 and change. That's a result of a little over 550,000 of general fund revenues, less appropriations of $282,000. And as you can see, your special revenue funds are increasing by about a million and a half. Those are grants and all those special sources of funding that Brittany just went over with you. Appropriations are 25 grand, again, that's the mental health wellness grant, and the few other things, and Miners Foundry of 150,000. And after tonight's action, we don't anticipate any further appropriations through the balance of the fiscal year. So the recommended action tonight is to conduct the public hearing and ultimately adopt Resolution Number 2025-07, amending the city's fiscal year 2425 city budget. With that, we'll answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Great, great.
And just one note, the staff report has my name at the top, that's really just because my job description requires that I present to you budgets. They're the staff that did all the work.
We got that.
So, but of note, when we adopted this budget, we had just recently approved, or Measure C had been approved by the voters. Steve and I have both lived through tax measures, and you'd never receive 100% of anticipated revenues with a new tax. You should be able to, because it's the same as one of our other taxes, but it never works out that way. Also, we, we didn't know for sure if the state would put it into effect July 1 or October 1. So we budgeted for three quarters of revenue at 90% of what one of our other taxes would have received. It turned out it started in July instead of October, so we got four quarters of revenue. We still didn't meet the full amount that we would have otherwise, but that's why we conservatively budget for those things, so we can't spend money that we won't get. But that's why that big number, 270 something thousand dollars, is there. And thanks to Steve and Brittany for making sure that we don't spend money that we don't have.
Great, great.
Excellent.
We'll start with public comment. Any public comment on the budget? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Questions, comments?
Concerning the loan to get the Miners Foundry, Finers Moundry. Miners Foundry entity going, how short do we anticipate that short-term loan to be? How can we track that it's being repaid?
So, in a perfect world, I'm hoping that's what we end up in, we won't have to touch that money at all, and the foundry's operations will cash flow themselves. But if there are any unknowns lying out there that we may not be aware of in the financials or anything else, that 150 grand is intended to be kind of a backstop, so we're not surprised. We're still going through the, the process of figuring everything out with the foundry, foundry's finances, but I estimate that if all goes well, the general fund could be repaid probably within the next six months, maybe even sooner, but I would say about six months, I'd feel comfortable saying. comfortable saying.
Thank you.
It is short-term. Can you tell us a little bit more about what an enterprise fund is?
Absolutely. An enterprise fund, well, there are two methods of accounting that city governments use. There's what's called fund accounting, that's your general fund, things like that. And then there's full accrual accounting, which is what the corporate world uses. Enterprise funds use the full accrual basis of accounting, so we account for operations as if it were a private business. So the foundry should be set up as a private business. It should be self-sustaining, just like your water utility and your wastewater utility. But it's basically accounting for an operation as if it were a private business.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If I could step into that one, having run enterprise funds for about 30 years, it is...
No way.
Yeah, I would claim, I don't, you know, I get attributed to a lot of expertise stuff around here, I don't self-claim many, but this one I would claim. But it is the one place in government where you have two sides of the budget, where you actually have revenues and expenditures. And optimally, that you can also make a profit, which is then reinvested in the physical facility, because the facility, the plant, is generating those revenues. So everything that you get and retain, although one must always be very careful not to develop too many reserves in an enterprise fund, because someone will think you're making too much money and take it away. But you do want that balance of being able to pay the whole thing, including capital investment, and also matching funds for grants and that sort of thing. So I've had extensive conversations with Sean Lon about this, and the foundry is ideal for this type of setup. And it would be a separate accounting where you would be able to see both sides of the balance at any given time.
Awesome, thank you.
Others?
Thank you, Brittany, thank you, Stephen. Good job, as always.
Very well done. Brittany, you're fun solo almost here, look at you. I think it's really great. Very accessible, you know, no big road, you know, landmines, so. Crank on. Thank you.
Yeah, again, beautiful budget. I mean, I'm going to, you know, do my geek thing, but to see how easy it is to understand where we stand. But the only comment I'd make about, this is a classic flat budget. I mean, the variation, except for Measure C 2024, which was explained, as that was a conservative estimate that came in higher, so that was the variation there. Otherwise, it's just within a couple percentage points, which shows that our projections were very accurate, which will probably be the last time that ever happens, because who knows what the hell is going to happen next. But it's really balanced and it's really clear, and thank you for your hard work on it, it's really, it's really great. So I'd be looking for a...
If I might add two things, Mayor. If folks want to look at, like Steve previously brought to the council, our five-year projection of revenue and expenditures, that model is very nimble. So as things at the federal and state level are in flux, we can, you know, tweak those things so that we'll still be able to project as good as possible. Steve's really good at that, and Brittany will get really good at that. The other piece is for those at home that just heard that we got a whole bunch more money in Measure C, we can't just, we didn't appropriate any of that money, and the council can't just spend that money on anything they want. We would come back to you in our future budget to appropriate funds out of that, and it can only be used for the things that the voters approved in Measure C. But what that will mean is that in this budget year or next budget year, and then in the continuing future, we'll be able to do more fuels mitigation, more home hardening, more business hardening, more stand-ups of fire-wise communities, more green waste drop-off opportunities and everything that goes along with the reasons that the voters approved that measure. So no appropriations of those funds tonight, and when we do, it'll only be for those uses.
It's the two-thirds vote that we got, the key just locked into the specific purpose. All right, looking for a motion over the resolution?
I move that we adopt the resolution.
Well, second.
Moved by Councilmember Fernandez, second by Vice Mayor Klein. Roll call.
Councilmember CC?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
And we'll now close the public hearing. I'm going to turn to our counselor here with a really, I don't know, am I supposed to close it before we vote or after we vote, or does it matter? Yeah, I was thinking that might be the case, but we got it done, so, thank you. All right, we're all good. Moving on to the next, don't go anywhere, to the next, which is a consideration to accept, receive, and file the audit financial statements and management report for year end June 30, 2023. Two years ago, so, living in the past. Go for it.
All right, hi again. In December 2023, we entered into an agreement with Lance Saul and Lundard, known as LSL, moving forward, to perform an independent financial audit, and we're here tonight to share the results with you. And joining with us is Calvin on Zoom, and he's got a presentation that he asked for you.
Hi, is my audio okay?
A little quiet.
Yeah, turn that up.
A little quiet, okay.
There we go.
Does it work a little better if I screwed in?
Thank you.
Got it.
Okay. And then, am I allowed to share my screen and present the slides?
Sure.
Yes.
He's going to present the mid-year budget slides now.
Are these up on the screen okay?
Yep.
I'm going to go to slideshow.
Well, greetings, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Calvin Kokel. I was the manager on the audit engagement this year, and Christian Towns was the partner, and the concurring partner was Ryan Domino. We were engaged to perform an audit for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2023, in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. During the engagement, we examined internal controls, and we examined these internal controls not to provide an opinion on internal controls, but to provide feedback to management and to help us with our audit risk assessment. And then during year-end fieldwork, we performed detailed testing of account balances and transactions, compliance testing with laws, regulations, and grant agreements, and other procedures necessary to obtain sufficient, appropriate audit evidence. Results of the audit, we issued an unmodified auditor's opinion on the financial statements, so that means that the financial statements are accurate and reliable as of June 30, 2023. We issued a report on internal control and compliance, and no opinion is expressed on the internal controls. We did note one material weakness around financial reporting and a significant deficiency over compliance with the BSCC program. In our audit communication letter, we noted no difficulties conducting our audit. We had no disagreements with management about the application of accounting principles. We determined that all estimates used by management in preparing the financial statements were reasonable, and we identified no fraud, waste, or abuse during the fiscal year ended June 30, 2023. And so that concludes my slides, and please let me know if you have any questions.
Great, thank you, thank you. We'll go ahead and open this up to the public for comment. Any comment on the audit? It's juicy, I don't know. Okay, thank you, we'll pull it back. Questions?
Steve has a presentation, if you would like, on any of the details, but certainly doesn't have to provide it if you...
Let's see where we are with the council. It's a dark and stormy night. Don't roll over, Lou. Don't roll over, Ryan, that line.
There was a deficiency noted. What are we doing about it?
Was it, I thought it was just a material weakness and not a deficiency.
I'm sorry.
We are both.
The significant deficiency relates to the Prop 64 Cohort II Grant Program. This deficiency...
Does that sound, sorry, I apologize.
It feels really distracting.
If you could turn that...
There you go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
This deficiency relates to a local evaluation plan that wasn't filed on time as of August 1 of 2021, I believe, was the date. In addition to a quarterly report that was to be filed prior to July 1 of 2022. So I think this finding, or this deficiency, came out of a separate compliance audit that LSL performed as one of the requirements of the Cohort II Grant Program. So this occurred prior to Brittany's involvement in anything and my involvement in anything. This goes back...
Pretty much Sean's.
Before you.
It was in the transition, right?
This was just, there was a lot of problems with, like, getting the BSCC grant up and going. It had a bunch of different hands in it, and until Sean took it over, it wasn't being really managed properly. So once they got involved, everything's, so that's not anything that significant in the grand scheme of things, I'll tell you.
Really, nothing?
But we're glad they found it, because that's, you know, why we want audits.
Satisfy your...
Yes, yes, it does.
Others?
And what was the significant deficiency? That was more about an internal control issue that...
That was the deadlines, wasn't it?
This had the material, the significant deficiency?
Yeah.
Yeah, that had to do with the deadlines on the grant reporting, Cohort II.
And then the material weakness was our internal controls not catching that, maybe?
That had to do with, in this case, restatements to beginning fund balances that predate, again...
All of us.
All of us here. So one of the reasons why we went out, we issued an RFP for audit firms, was to get a quality audit firm, and if you recall, LSL was a little more pricey, but they're very thorough. And this is all, believe it or not, good news, because now the financial statements reflect accurate beginning and ending balances that we as staff now can use on a go-forward basis to report correct information to you and the public.
That sounds perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so as strange as this will sound, I was so pleased to see an audit that found something. I do not trust perfect audits. I simply do not, and I've seen way too many of them in Nevada County. They make me, they make me very nervous. Personally, I've been audited many, many times professionally, not personally, many, many times, and found controls or deviances or something, because a lot of what we do in budget is, like, you decide, we're going to put the money over there, and the auditor comes along and says, well, it actually should have gone over there, and those are the kinds of things we're dealing with. Every one of the deficiencies in here is being dealt with and being addressed, and I'm, I really, appreciation to the auditors for doing such a thorough job, and also to acknowledge that, really, a lot of these things that were caught should have been caught earlier by previous auditors.
Yeah.
So that's where I am, and good job, thank you, and I feel very confident in this audit, so appreciate that. Okay, any, we did public comment, looking for a, what are we after here?
Accept, receive, and file.
Yes, we are...
Received, received, received.
Yes, we are looking for a resolution, so a first and a...
Is it a resolution?
Is it a resolution?
Accept, receive, and file, so just a motion.
Accept, receive, and file.
Let's do that.
Let's do that, okay, we're going to do that. Is that adequate, Counselor? Yes.
I second.
I second you doing that.
I second us doing that.
Thank you, thank you, well done.
Thank you, Calvin.
Thank you. I just want to say that...
Eventually, we do need a vote.
Again, I always say this, but this is what drug me into this, and I just feel so confident in where we, how we understand our finances now as compared to where we were, and there's really good reasons why it took three years to get there. So thank you for all your work. Brittany, you're doing great.
Thank you. We should definitely vote, Bill, right? Do we have to vote on that?
No, we don't have to vote. We gave direction to accept and file.
Yeah, we'll do a revocative vote, we'll be...
You want a, you want a motion.
Vote to receive and file.
We did the motion. We did the motion.
Yeah, you have a motion to second.
Just got to do roll call.
Roll call. Wow, what happened?
Where did you go? Councilmember CC?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Usually, we leave all your receive and file on the consent, so you never have to say that.
Yeah, that was it, that's why you're... So, all right, so we are now looking for a consideration of one, Resolution 2025-08, Resolution of City Council, City of Nevada, City adopting the Nevada City 22 to 27 Strategic Plan Update and approving the public process to prioritize the actions related to the plan. Sean, take it away.
Thank you again. This is step one in an ongoing process to update our strategic plan. The end step essentially is your adoption of the budget in June for the next fiscal year, which will include objectives in the budget assigned to various departments along with funds to operationalize your prioritized strategic plan. So what we were asking you to do tonight is adopt the plan as amended in the packet. As you know, in December, you approved the process to go through this. Since then, various components, goals, and initiatives have been reviewed at three council meetings and four committee meetings. And then on February 12 of this year, you reviewed all the recommendations to date and provided some feedback. All of those have been reflected in the attached document. The one thing I'll call to your attention that was brought up at the previous meeting was Housing Goal Number Nine, which was inartfully presented in the previous version. It now reads, "Develop a streamlined program supporting infill construction of 10 single-family housing units with ADUs from 2025 to 2030, limited to long-term rentals with both fee reductions and financial incentives." So it is not a tent unit apartment complex.
And if I could, since you're speaking to that, because I had somebody else approach me about it, but no way does this approve, I mean, it still has to comply with our objective design standards.
Yeah, so this is not a fully formed program yet. It'll come through the Economic and Community Development Committee with recommendations to ultimately come to the council to approve. So if, this could have a, what we would refer to as a ministerial track, so if someone was coming in with their own SB 9 project, which preempts our ability to send that project to the Planning Commission, they likely could use this program, to be determined. But you could also have the regular track where we're incentivizing removing roadblocks and it'd still go through the Planning Commission. If something is ministerially approved, it still does have to meet our objective design standards.
Because we did the objective design, particularly for AB.
Correct, and that's true whether or not it's in this program or not.
Asking on behalf of someone else, thank you.
Yeah, no, that's, that's great, but...
But again, it's just a goal, and we'll come back with a fully fledged program.
That's pretty much what I said.
And we have, we've applied for several small grants, and we will be applying for, in the fall, a much larger grant that would potentially support this, that would be part of those incentives to remove those roadblocks and deliver on this. This is, it says for, you know, long-term housing, what we're, what the council is committed to, and the previous housing committee and now the Economic and Community Development Committee has been working on is that missing middle, or what we refer to as workforce housing, which is not defining our, defining our housing element. So if you read our housing element, it's the moderate to low income, it's that kind of phase in between of, I can't get any help from anybody, but I, which also means I mean, I make too much money to get help, but I don't make enough money to not need help. So those are most of the...
Is that all of us?
It's almost all the employees, almost all the 2,000 employees we import into Nevada City every day to, you know, work in our restaurants and work in retail and work in our movie theaters, and some of those are our lawyers and our dentists and our doctors and those things too. So that's, that's where that, that's where that aim is going, and I appreciate Vice Mayor Klein and Councilmember Fernandez in helping me, you know, work through the language of that that I, that I didn't put in well to start with. And I appreciate Vice Mayor Klein and Councilmember Fernandez in helping me, you know, work through the language of that, that I, that I didn't put in well to start with. And then since our February 12th meeting, the council, we added the goal under vibrancy, strategic initiative goal number eight, integrate the Miners Foundry Cultural Center into city operations to preserve its cultural legacy while enhancing programming and activities that benefit the community and local businesses. This is, I'm sure this is a starting point as we move into next year's budget and have a full picture of the direction from all of you and really broadly the community. As we heard last week, last Thursday, there's a lot of people with a lot of interest in what can come out of the continuation of what the Miners Foundry Cultural Center has been and what it can be under the city's stewardship. So I'm sure there'll be a lot more to come there, but, and detailed objectives, but that's the one goal that's inserted for now. Certainly open to taking direction on that tonight. So with that, we'd request that you adopt the resolution that adopts the strategic plan update. The next steps are, there's a community convening event on March 27th at the Miners Foundry where the community will be asked to participate in, much like you saw last Thursday, an opportunity to, you know, stretch your mind a little bit and then give us your thoughts on, it'll be a different format, but give input on how folks would both like to see us prioritize the strategic plan, but also prioritize the use of our existing funds, limited as they are. Our budget is, as you just saw, good. So, and, and stable at this point, which is, which is always good. So the next steps after that would be to, to take that information, digest it, aggregate it, bring it back to the council in, in a way that you can operationalize it. That next step would be April 30th at your budget workshop. And we will present you a fully developed budget with room for you to, you know, move the pieces and parts. And then the first meeting in June is when you'd adopt that budget with all of the objectives in it that would speak to what we will deliver to you in the next budget year. And then also have the prioritization of the things that will follow after that in the following year. So really a two-year look at completing everything that is in this amended strategic plan.
Perfect.
Which happens to coincide with the time that I have all five of you on the council. So thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Likewise. All right, public comment on our, our really comprehensive strategic plan. So comprehensive, I'm spending a lot of thought trying to figure out how to set priorities in the public process. We should have a conversation. Any comments? We're getting a thumbs up there. We're good. Okay. All right, we're on. All right, any, any comments?
Well, just thank you for rewording goal nine under housing. It's much clearer to me now.
Yes, yeah. I can understand that.
Great.
Talking about ten houses.
Yeah, it was, yeah. It was.
It wasn't that bad before.
Apologize for what it was before. Even when I reread it, I'm like, that's not what it even sounded right in my head, so.
It wasn't that bad.
I just really appreciate how much we've gotten done. This, this, all of this stuff came from the community, talking to us, telling us what's important to them, filtering its way through, and we've already accomplished so much of it. It's pretty great.
It's built on over a thousand data points from our community.
Yeah.
And, and I'm with you. We, we delivered on that plan.
Thank you, staff.
Yay, staff.
Yay, staff. Yeah, yeah. So, okay, looking for a motion to approve the resolution and the public process. I'm sorry.
I need to close public comments.
Oh, I got, okay, we're done with public comment. It's the weather. So looking for a motion. Thank you, Nancy.
I move we adopt the resolution and approve the public process.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Vice Mayor Klein, second by Councilmember Fernandez. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cece?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passed. Five zero.
And Mr. Mayor, if we could, if, if you don't need a bio break, if we could move to number 11, unless Lisa walked in and I didn't see her, she's running a little late to get back for your item number nine.
Okay.
I could use one.
Well, we'll, we'll take a bio break.
Perfect.
Excellent. Thank you.
We have a couple of dead up here. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting back to order, and we will move to item 11, consideration of the annual review for the renewal of ordinance 2205, continuing the current military equipment policy used within the Nevada City Police Department, covered under policy City Police Department Policy 705. We decided the shotgun sings the song, right? Song. What? The shotgun sings, that's an old song, you know, but this is about shotguns again, right?
It is. Beanbag. All we have that falls under these. So Mayor, members of council, thank you for having me. This isn't going to take very long, so I'm going to talk very slow and hopefully she comes in because we've had no change since last year. So this is something that I have to bring to you every year. It's the most poorly titled law, I think, that you can, they can ever, we didn't write it. So we are not actually militarizing our law enforcement. That's why I want to stress every single year.
We keep an eye on that.
This is, there's certain equipment that has been deemed a militarization of law enforcement. We don't participate in pretty much anything that is deemed under that classification. The only thing that we do have is beanbag rounds, which are, beanbag shotgun rounds, which are deemed as kinetic weapons. And they are technically a kinetic weapon. A beanbag shotgun round is considered a less lethal option. We do have those. Every one of our patrol cars has those, and we have not used those or deployed those at all in the last year, and we have not purchased any rounds of ammunition for those shotguns in the last year. Other than that, we have no other pieces of equipment that fall under this classification of this law.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Any public comment?
Really quick.
Seeing none, I will close public comment. I'm trainable on a good day. And I'm looking for a, a.
I want to talk to him about it.
You want to talk about it? I'm sorry. I was so focused on getting that right.
You got one part, maybe next.
No, 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 no. So regular shotguns shoot this, these rounds. They're just, you know, you swatch them out. So any shotgun could shoot these beanbag rounds, right?
Correct. So because we have a little time, I'll go into that to some degree for you if you'd like.
Not too much, okay?
Okay. So yes, they are just technically a shotgun round. They'll fit into any 12-gauge shotgun. What you'll see on, to make sure that there's never a mistake, because obviously that's the biggest fear, is there's going to be a mistake between an actual shotgun round and a beanbag round. All non-lethal shotgun rounds, you'll see that they have an orange stock and the, the pump slide is actually bright orange. So it's a very, and the sling is orange. So the, everything that's not metal on the weapon is bright orange, and that signifies to everybody on scene, this is a less lethal tool. This is a less lethal piece of equipment that will never be loaded with lethal rounds. It will always carry the beanbag round.
Is that standardized, like across post or something?
I don't know if it's a post requirement, but it's standardized across law enforcement from everywhere I've ever seen, yes.
That makes sense. Okay.
Other questions?
Yeah, I just have a note on, on the, the text that was in the packet. Since you bring this to us every year, and I think that's a good practice to keep going with, because I think people, because of the name of this, have concerns about what it means. It said Nevada City Police Department has not used any kinetic rounds since the implementation of this policy last year and has not purchased any new rounds. The implementation of this policy was 2022.
That's correct. We just, I should reword it because we do have to bring it back. So every year it's re-implemented, but you're correct.
You could say since last year or.
I could say forever because we've never actually used one, so.
That's all I got, because otherwise this is very familiar to me at this point, and it's nice to see, Chief.
It's old hat now for him.
He did ask if I wanted to volunteer to take one for the team, just to see how it works.
Or if anybody on the council.
I've seen them, I saw a guy go down really hard and then it's other, it just depends how far away.
I wouldn't do it.
Take one for the team, like receive?
Yeah, like get, so he could shoot me.
I would prefer not to be shot, for the record.
Ever by anything.
I would prefer for our city manager not do that kind of volunteering.
Thank you for that direction. I am looking for a motion to approve the ordinance.
I move that we approve the beanbag ordinance. No, I move that we point to ordinance as, as written, sorry.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Fernandez, second by Councilmember Cece Fleming.
Let's get you some coffee.
Wow.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Cece?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yep.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yep.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Carries five zero.
All right, thank you, Chief. See you again next year on the beanbag ordinance. All right, so we are going to back up to item, item, item nine, consideration, an update of the Nevada City lighting ordinance, lighting ordinance in the pursuit of dark sky community certification. Lisa McCandless, you're on.
Hi, welcome.
Evening, Council.
She kayaked in. So much rain.
Are you ready for your presentation?
Yes, I have a PowerPoint for you. We love those.
Gabby loves them. Gabby loves them.
Oh.
So thankfully, Dark Skies International gives all the pretty pictures, so I didn't have to go find all of those. Next slide, please. So, just to sort of intro the item on your agenda tonight, the planning commission has reviewed the draft ordinance for the Dark Skies, update to the lighting standards, otherwise known as the Dark Sky Lighting Ordinance, and the ordinance has also been reviewed by staff and is, if you give the recommendation tonight, it is ready to go to Dark Sky International for a review and to start that process with them. So, part of being a dark sky certified place, or city, or community, is how we show our commitment to protecting the night sky. So I'll just walk through a few slides that sort of highlight some of the issues with not improving lighting regulations, and then we can sort of go through there. So, the, this is the definition that we have in the draft ordinance for light pollution is any adverse effect of man-made light. Next slide, please. Sky glow is basically what happens as more lighting gets intensified in a, in an area. If it's not done right, it can create sky glow, and that is an effect of not being, it creates an effect of not being able to see the stars, or stars details. So our definition is the illumination of the night sky, or parts of it. The most common cause of sky glow is artificial light that emits light pollution, which accumulates into a vast glow that can be seen from miles away and from high in the sky. Next slide, please. Glare is another negative impact of poor lighting design, and that is the sensation produced by a bright source within the visual field that is sufficiently brighter than the level to which the eyes are adapted to cause annoyance, discomfort, or loss in visual performance and visibility, blinding light. The magnitude of glare depends on such factors as the size, position, brightness of the source, and on brightness levels to which the eyes are adapted. Thank you for listening, that was long. So, I think Thomas and I, our planning commissioner, would appreciate me showing this slide. It's a, it gives a direct visualization of what glare does, so, lights that shine out instead of down, a lot of people think that those are what they should have on their property to increase security, because they think they can see out better. Next, oh, so, so can you see the potential stalker? I don't think anybody can. So this is a light that shines out, that's unshielded, and it's spreading light, not only outward, but also up, when it should be just shining on the area where people are walking, so next slide. Here you can see how, if the light would, was shielded, you would actually be able to see better. So that glare gets in your eyes and it makes you see worse than you would see without it typically. So, the, the, the myth is that more lighting is safer, right? Okay, next slide, please. And then this is also a problem that we are trying to solve for is light trespass, which is unwanted wasted illumination produced by a lighting system that enters the night sky or crosses over a property line. I think that's pretty self-explanatory. So here's a slide that shows a representation of the way that poor lighting, or excess lighting, is affecting the United States, and it's like this in other places of the world, too. Obviously, Europe is seeing the effects and other developed parts of the world, but it's pretty easy to see that it's not following the trend of new construction, right? It's just following the, it's just on a trajectory that is really affecting the way that people can or cannot see the stars and the sky at night. Next slide, please. So there's a website called Light Pollution Map, it's at lightpollutionmap.info, and this is our area. You can see there that the valley is very bright, and it does create a lot of sky glow that is starting to affect us more and more. You can see Nevada City there on your image to the, in the bottom right, we're sort of on the verge of being a darker place. We do see stars, thankfully, we do have a good view of the night sky, and I do believe that if we start to improve the regulations and do things as a city that we can, hopefully, keep that as, create it to be static instead of getting worse, and then also encourage our neighbors as well. Next slide, please. So here's a startling fact, only two out of 10 people on earth can see the Milky Way, and 99% of the US and Europe live under light polluted skies. Next slide, please. So, solutions, which is what we are attempting to address in the ordinance, these principles outline ways that we can improve the situation in our community, so that's encouraging lights to be on only when they're needed and useful, shine the light where it's needed and not where it's not, so that's, you know, pointing down towards the ground, low-level lighting and using light sensors, controlled lighting, which is timers and sensors as well, and then color temperature also plays a big part in the overall effect of sky glow. Next slide. So here's an example of good shielding for lights, you can see that, you can't see the bulb, the bulb is recessed into the fixture and the light keeps shining down where it's supposed to be. And then, in our ordinance, we also address color temperature and Kelvins, so the warmer the color temperature, the better it is for the overall effect for your community. So here's another example of shielding, on the left, that's a street lamp that shines out, and then on the right is a street lamp that has shielding and shines down. PG&E does offer shielding add-ons that we will, in the future, be able to buy and improve the streetlights in town. And then, the image on the bottom left shows the glare that I was talking about from unshielded lights, and how it just sort of shines out, and then the image on the right shows that you can still light up the parking lot just as effectively with shielded lights that don't create the same amount of light pollution. Next slide, please. So we can make a difference. So, that sort of walks through our issues that we have and our reasons of why the, this item has come up and why this initiative has come through the planning commission and the city council. And, so with, as far as other solutions, better lighting can improve the situation, improve regulations as well, and then, the certification piece, it shows a commitment by the city to not only change things in the short term, but also in the long term. There's also no other dark sky communities that are currently certified in California.
Really?
Yeah, there's one, San Diego County has a dark sky park, I believe, and they have some regulations at the county level to protect that place, but there isn't anywhere that's certified here in California yet.
So where are you first, huh?
Yeah, for a, for a community or a city.
Yeah, that's kinda awesome.
Yeah.
Truck is on track, though, right?
They're not pursuing...
Really?
Yeah, they said that they're not, and they, they're, while they have a dark skies, quote-quote dark skies lighting ordinance, it hasn't been reviewed by Dark Skies International.
Interesting.
Yeah, it's a different thing.
Yeah, so there's things that communities can do, even if they don't want to get certified, right? They can improve their lighting regulations without having that level of commitment. There are a lot of dark sky certified places in other parts of the country, like in Utah, it's really popular, and in Arizona, and it's sort of created, like, I'm not sure which places were the first ones to get dark sky certified, or that took up the, the work, but it gets to be sort of contagious around places, so I really hope that happens here. I hope that Nevada County, even if they don't apply to be certified, that they improve their, their regulations to protect the night sky, and then Grass Valley, and then hopefully it will continue out from there, so.
Yay, cool.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any public comment? God.
Hello, I'm William Lee Strickland, King God, I have, I have experience in, I'll just say the dark side of things, and I think a good resolution for like, as far as like housing complexes, or, you know, people's property, you know, LED infrared light would be much better to see us out there, and, because we all see you, but you don't see us, so.
Wow.
At any rate, so we'll come up with some kind of LED infrared little spec lights, and that'll darken things up to where you can see us, and I like your shade on your lamps, as far as the streetlights, your shade, sounds really nice, you know, for public safety, as far as sidewalks, and, you know, staying under the lights, you know, as far as town goes, but, you know, as far as personal properties and stuff, you know, so we're not watching the football game with you guys, you know, and keeping score, yeah, we'll just go with the infrared LEDs around your properties, and it'll just help you see what us out there, and then, but I'm speaking from the Masonic temples right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to the light.
Yeah, let's bring the light, let's, let's stay in the light, we're gonna work on that.
Don't go into the light.
So, a good example of the, of shielded lighting and unshielded lighting and glare is in the commercial street parking lot.
Got the tennis court?
So, the, the tennis court are shielded lights, so, Dark Skies compliant, they put out a lot of light, they didn't when we started.
Yeah, that's right.
But if you go to the commercial street parking lot, not tonight, because it's raining really hard, but, any other night, the lighting that the council approved, the solar lighting that we put in the parking lot there, is shielded lighting, it's Dark Skies compliant lighting, it's 2700 Kelvin, that's towards the left-hand side, the yellowish side of, of lighting more than natural light, and, so, that's, that's wonderful. What's not Dark Skies compliant, and is both creates glare and light trespass, is the light that we have over the bathroom pointed at the Stamper, so, to light that up at night, it's just throwing stuff out there, it's high glare, it's unshielded lighting.
Look at the bathroom in the parking lot of the tennis courts.
So, so that's an example of two, in exactly the same place, two different, you know, contrasting things, if anybody wanted to see it, so, there'll, there'll be a lot more to come as we go through this process, but, you know, it's even worse in the rain, because the rain creates that blur off of it, yeah.
Only we can get car manufacturers to do this with headlights somehow, they're getting worse and worse.
Okay, so, we have questions, Doug?
Yeah, just, I just have one sort of implementation kind of question, you know, this is, it's a great ordinance concept, everything, how do we get people to comply, and how do we incentivize them, you know, and, and so what is the, the cost of entry? You know, what is a typical person to have to replace their front porch light, you know, what is that gonna cost? And then maybe we can come up with some kind of program to help people, or things like that.
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly what I'm thinking, so the, the way that the ordinance is drafted is that there's a phase-in period for people, and so it's not like the day it passes that everybody will have to go out and buy new fixtures, so, within that phase-in period, I would hope to include on the CIP or something where we can have money or get a grant to help people do that, and then part of the work of the city is doing ongoing community engagement, and helping people understand and getting them on board with why this is important to not only the city, but to them, and, and sort of building that momentum around it, so I hope that, you know, more people will come in early and then...
Get the kids involved and everything.
Yeah, get kids involved, yeah.
You know, they have telescopes, you could, I think they have a couple telescopes you can check out at the library, too, so, I mean, we could do a whole program, you're way ahead of me on this stuff, I know, don't worry.
Yeah, Rod, Rod Brown also has a really amazing telescope.
Oh, yeah.
I would suggest going out with him, if you get the opportunity.
I'm gonna go with him, yeah.
Yeah.
Doug, didn't you have a, you had a good question about how this interacts with other ordinances, right?
Oh, there was some, yeah, I did get some public comment about how, well, it's not this ordinance, it was more about the, another ordinance having to do with signs, and how signs are mentioned and other things, and which ordinance trumps, it's not really, it wasn't Dark Skies. Oh, yeah, it was, yeah, it was, sorry, nevermind.
Yeah, so there's a part in here that points to illuminated signs.
Sorry, guys.
One of the requirements of Dark Sky International is that we have to limit illuminated signs.
You have to eliminate?
We have to restrict them.
Okay.
Yeah, so, it, within the ordinance, it does speak to illuminate signs, and then it also points to that section of our code that prohibits illuminated signs.
So they're in, they're in alignment, are they?
Yes.
So here's a comment I got, "I'm concerned that the Dark Sky ordinance may not make it clear that the existing sign ordinance and the existing historical ordinance sign sections supersede the Dark Sky ordinance, where they're more restrictive, as well as architectural review decisions relating to lighting for other design purposes, which may have been required of individual projects in the past, but maybe not in the future." You want an example, I can give you one. For example, design review, especially in the historical district, often deals with the aesthetic nuances of lighting to meet the historical district goals, which may differ from the Dark Sky standards, this still should be allowed, and relative to signed lighting, any current illegal lighting of existing signs, which has not been abated, should not be allowed in the 10-year amortization, they should be considered illegal, non-conforming. Finally, the Dark Sky ordinance, the historic ordinance is more restrictive than the Dark Skies in certain relative ways, for instance, not, neon lighting visible from the street is not allowed in the historic ordinance sign section. Another example is a flagpole lighting for advertising flags, which are not even permitted now, and should not be lit either, although they can be lit under Dark Skies. So there's some, obviously there's some...
Where did that come from?
One of our, our citizens, I just got some public comment, yes.
Did, did the planning commission consider things like this when they were looking at the ordinance? I imagine they did, that's why it went to them?
Uh huh, yes. Yeah, thank you for reading that, too. Yeah, I think that's good, good comments. Flagpole lighting, I think that there's a, a mix-up, flagpole lighting is like the American flag, not flags hanging in downtown for advertising purposes.
24-hour lighting of flags prevents having to lower them on a regular basis.
Right, and they typically are lit from below, shining up, and then the other thing I heard was that historic lighting might not comply, but there's so many options, really, for lighting fixtures these days, that, you know, we can definitely get the light fixtures downtown to, like, comply, whether by, you know, putting some black paint on the top to create that shield, or, you know, buying shielded lights, so, yeah.
But also that those two other ordinances are more restrictive, is what I heard, than this one, is that correct? And they should supersede?
I don't think they're more restrictive.
I don't believe so, yeah.
I think that's a sort of a subjective...
But we'll work through that part. But we'll work through that part. But if we were taking a sign application or enforcing the sign regulation, we'd use the sign ordinance. If the planning commission is taking up architectural review, um, then the minimum threshold would be under this new ordinance, but they still have discretion under motherload architecture, Nevada City Architecture Standards for, um, separate from the lighting ordinance as to what it would look like, how it appears on the building and, and those other considerations.
Great.
It's good.
Thanks, yeah.
Anything over here?
So there would be no lighting that would leak through between these two ordinances?
Pun intended, yes.
I like it, Lou, I like it.
That, that's the intent, although there are exceptions in this, and I'm sure, this isn't the final version, I'm sure we'll have comments, um, that Lisa will have to, to work through. Um, but there's exceptions for things like our cast lamps. They don't create enough lumens to make a, an impact. They, they basically don't even cast light on the ground unless it's raining like tonight, then you get that reflective, um, nature. Um, this, it has callouts for holiday lighting, string lighting, things like that. Some of those, the newer ones with LEDs can create a lot of, um, glare and light pollution, although the historic ones don't so much. So there's ca- carve-outs for a lot of these things. Um, and then sport court, um, or is that, what do they call it? Sport lighting?
Yeah, recreation lighting.
Recreation lighting.
Tennis courts?
Has, yes, has its own, um, regulations as well, so.
Well, I just want to say that I lived 27 years in, um, Mountain View and, uh, saw the Milky Way about five times, you know, all of my years there. Well, one of them was during a blackout. Whereas here in Nevada City, I can go out on my back porch and see it almost every night, not tonight, but almost every night.
It is special.
It is marvelous. We should preserve that.
Yes, absolutely.
Here, here.
Yes.
Um, I've just got a kind of a practical question. Um, in the packet, 17.160.080 says, "All exterior light fixtures shall be approved by the city prior to installation." I think of, uh, a homeowner who, their fixture goes bunk and they need to go replace it. Do, would they be coming to the city first and saying, "What am I allowed to get?" Or how's that gonna practically work?
So, uh, hopefully they would. People probably won't. But by having that in there, it gives us, um, the allowance to go talk to them and say, you know, "We're sorry, you might not have known about this. Um, can we help you pick out better fixtures?" Um, and, and, and then it sort of points to that part of the code. Does that make sense?
But we'll do a big advertising campaign with this. We'll share this with everyone. We'll work with BNC and the other hardware stores. You can already go there today and buy dark sky certified lighting and literally side-by-side, sometimes there's, here's one that is shielded and here's one that's not. And they look exactly the same. Honestly, most of the time it's just how far down they hang the bulb. Um, almost all lighting is shielded in some fashion, but if you hang the bulb down past the shielding, it's no longer shielded. But if you recess it up, then it generally is. So we'll work with them, you know, we'll have ways like, hey, here's where you can find stuff. If you're going on Am-
Yeah.
People, I wish people would shop locally, but people are gonna shop on Amazon, so that kind of certification or other things will, you know, work with people. And Lisa did a lot of effort, um, through last summer, um, through the dark skies photography competition. And we'll start having booths out again at special events and talking about these things. We'll have demonstration aids with side-by-side lighting with and without shielding at night so you can see, you know, what it is and what the value is. And, you know, ultimately, I think Adam was in first grade, I was in second grade last time Haley's comet came through. Um, I know I went and saw it, um, not with Rod Brown's telescope, but a similar one, um, with the astronomy club at, um, the old airport.
Yeah.
Um, and it was amazing. Um, and for my grandkid to see that 47 years from now, um, we'll have to do something like this or we'll be unable to do so.
Right.
Oh, that's cool.
Cool. I, yeah, I think the education component's gonna be huge. I think no matter what, we're gonna get grumbling, but if we can get people on board so they're not, I hate to say it, blindsided by this.
Oh.
All for the better.
If you just have a, a dark skies vigilante group with, uh, BB guns and just go out and take out everybody's.
I, I think you heard from one.
What?
Oh. Um, yeah, um, so I, this, this is great. It is gotta be about education. I have a question.
Do not endorse BB gun vigilante BB guns.
I wasn't endorsing guns. I was commenting on existing vigilantes. Um, so, um, so the ordinance, we're passing the ordinance, it will go into effect 30 days or?
We're not passing the ordinance.
We're not passing the ordinance.
You are saying we're on the right track. It's gonna, she's gonna send, Lisa's gonna send it off to Dark Sky International for review.
That was my question. It goes to them before it gets implemented.
It goes to them. It takes several months for them to review it. Um, there's like a formal application process. And then, um, once ready, it goes to their board and their board makes the final determination.
Yeah, okay.
And then back to our planning commission and then to the council.
Okay, yeah, I, that's what I wanted to know.
And that's why we're waiting to do the ordinance is because we want to get their feedback so that we don't have to do a, a change, yeah.
Got it, got it. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
And Lisa's been doing a ton of work on a million things, um, in this city, but specifically on this. One of the requirements, and there's many that I don't know of, but, um, is that we do, um, light monitoring. Um, so we bought a light monitor and Lisa takes it to different places in town and we'll, so in, in the long run, um, we hope to have something at, like, we have the weather stations throughout town, to have light monitoring at those and then be able to speak to trending over time of what the outcomes of your ordinance are, so.
Yeah, the, one of the comment I had was, uh, um, I know you've been working on this a really long time. I, I just want to give a shout out to Dan Reinhardt, who was one of the people that brought this to the council's attention after the tennis court nights came, and because in, in, living around Pioneer Park, you get an open sky. It is one of the few places in this town where you can look up and see the stars every night, uh, unless the tennis court lights on.
In my backyard.
Or, or, so, um, anyway, um, so, but, uh, it, it's moving, Dan, it's still moving. We're headed the right way. And thank you for all your work on this, Lisa.
Mm-hmm, of course.
So let's see, we receive a report and provide direction. Go forth. This is the direction, right? So, okay, I think we're good. Okay, thank you. Uh, so, thank you, Lisa.
Yeah, thank you.
Great work. And I love the competition, the pictures when you did the competition were just amazing.
Yeah.
Some beautiful, great work. And I know you're, I know you're sincerely committed to this. Um, thank you.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
All right, so, uh, we will now go to council member and future agenda items and reports. Uh, we will start as always with our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, our next meeting is on the 26th, but until then, if you want to get more out of, um, city meetings, the Fire Safety Advisory Committee and Lisa's, um, planning commission both meet next Thursday. Planning commission during the day, uh, Fire Safety Advisory Committee with, uh, Mayor Peterson and, uh, Councilmember Cece in the evening. Um, if you can't get enough of my voice, um, then that's a problem. But if you like Evan McLeitton's voice, then, uh, tune into KNCO tomorrow morning at nine. We'll be talking about, uh, green waste and biochar kilns and recycling and some other stuff. Um, at the last Public Arts Commission, um, meeting, the theme for the new Champ Gallery installation was chosen. It is Youth Visions of Tomorrow, showcase of young artists envisioning Nevada cities and California's values and future environmentally, socially, and culturally. And it's open to local youth. Uh, the application due date is March 26th. There's links on our, uh, website and, uh, our call to artists for the Painted Pianos Program that will come to fruition this summer. Um, will be out in the next, uh, couple of weeks as well before our next council meeting. All fun stuff. Hopefully the rain and snow don't get to us too much, but be safe driving out there through the weekend. That's all I have this evening, Mr. Mayor.
If, if, if you would, if you didn't mind, if you thought it was appropriate, you relayed a story to me this morning, though, after your meeting with OES about, uh, uh, zero to five. And if you would, because we had fire on the, if you would relate that story, I think certainly Councilmember Cece would appreciate it, but the rest of you may as well.
So I was at a undisclosed meeting location bunker, um, at, you know, the Old Mayfair Air Force Base, um, uh, discussing, um, amongst other things, the governor's, um, recent, um, proclamations related to, um, fires, um, and SEQA and zoning and everything having to do with wildfire. Um, and one of the, um, one of the biggest challenges, um, for folks is, um, in both having an effective ordinance and enforcing an effective ordinance relative to defensible space. And there was a comment from, uh, a relatively large, um, agency that, um, that, you know, CalFire's had a lot of time to be working on what's called Zone Zero, the, the Ember Zone in defensible space, which is zero to five feet away from your house. It's probably the most critical place that you can, and the least amount of effort gets the biggest results as far as survivability of, of your home, uh, as it pertains to home hardening. Um, and the comment was that, um, nobody in California is doing this. And then they looked at me and said, "Well, except maybe Nevada City," because it is in our ordinance. It is inspected annually by our teams and it is enforceable, although we're not doing enforcement, we're doing education and outreach at this point. So.
That's sweet.
It was, it was nice to have the recognition from a relatively large agency on what, uh, Evan and Camille and the rest of the OES team are doing for you every day.
Thanks for relating that. I, I, I liked that story a lot.
That's great, sorry, yeah.
Um, Councilmember Fleming, what you got?
Um, I don't got a lot. Um, you know, uh, I'm trying to, one of the things I sort of have to ask you guys, I don't, I don't know who I ask these days. Um, I'm putting together an event for the Food Bank, right? We're already seeing increased numbers and they're cutting into USDA budget. It's gonna be bad. So, uh, a, a celebrity chef is gonna come in and do some cooking for us, or no, I think he's just gonna talk. This guy enters in and provides our foods. So I would like us to be able to host that at Myers Foundry. And I don't know, I guess I have to talk to Alon.
Talk to Alon.
And just as, I want to talk to you guys too, because ultimately it's up to you and I'd like you to come and attend. It's gonna be a very fun event. It's gonna be a brunch on June 29th. And, uh, we're just in the.
It's the whole special event permit. You take it through Alon and we'll come back.
I know, I'm gonna be one of the first people going through the process.
Cool.
Yeah, very exciting. So, anyway, that's, that's all I got, really. I tried more, but I can't think.
Councilmember Cece?
Um, some official business and then some personal and a bit of a rant. Um, first of all, uh, I attended the biochar pilot and it went really, really well. You could scarcely tell that there was a, a conflagration inside of a barrel happening a thousand yards away. Um, very little smoke. And I'm not sure how much char they, they generated, but they reduced huge piles of really flammable stuff very quickly.
It went in a barrel, it was like six feet across.
Yeah, six feet across, four feet high, double walled. It was, it was marvelous to see that it worked. And we'll be getting a report on that from Evan soon. Um, I'm sorry to say that I missed the quarterly wildfire stakeholders meeting. By four hours, I arrived and I couldn't find it. And, um, very nicely, um, Alex, Alex came out and said, "It was this morning." So I hope to hear from her, uh, at the next Fire Safety Advisory Committee meeting on Thursday, the 20th, what I missed. But it was about enforcement and, and regulations. On a personal note, this is gonna be a little tough. Um, Felice Picano passed away today. You probably do not know that name. In the 1980s, seven gay authors launched the modern gay fiction, um, era. They were Christopher Cox, Robert Farrow, Michael Grumley, Andrew Halloran, Felice Picano, Edmund White, and George Whitmore. And of those, we lost four during the AIDS crisis. We still had Halloran and White and Picano until this morning, and Felice, um, passed away. Um, I would not be here if it were not for those seven writers. And my business would not be here if it weren't for Felice Picano. I published two of his last books. And, uh, frankly, they, they kept the business afloat during COVID. Because he is an excellent writer, his voice will be missed, but he will live on in his words and all the people he touched.
Sorry for your loss. Does he have any more books that haven't been published yet?
He had one in manuscript that I know of, yes. Yeah. A collection of poems, I believe. He did everything. He did plays, he did poems, he did autobiography, uh, and, and wonderful, amazing fiction.
Sorry for your loss and thank you for sharing that.
Thank you very much. My rant is that I agree entirely with Zach. It is not too soon for us to be worried. It may soon be too late. Um, Mohammed Khalil was arrested in New York City recently. He was arrested without the presentation of a written warrant. He was arrested on charges that were made up on the spot when he told them they didn't have the grounds to arrest him. He's removed from New York to a private prison in Louisiana, leaving his eight-month-pregnant wife and his lawyer not being able to know where he was. If this is not the definition of disappeared, I don't know what is. I came back from visiting Buenos Aires, Argentina, where the, where the sidewalks are paved, paved with the names of the disappeared. We cannot let that happen here. And now is not too soon to start fighting it. And that's my rant.
Thank you.
You ran it well.
And that's, you know, on that point, though, I, I was gonna ask, um, are we sort of doing an assessment of how we're, how the, you know, reduction in, oh, sorry.
We're, we're gonna, we're gonna have a little more conversation.
Okay.
I assume we are. Uh, Council, Councilmember Fernandez, would you like to go?
Thank you, I will. Lou, thank you so much for bringing that into this space. Um, my hope as we moved forward in this calendar year is that, yes, we would continue to do the business of the city and also, uh, remember that there are larger forces, uh, caving in on us and we need to tend to that as well. And so I look forward to having that discussion as a council and with law enforcement in the community. Maybe you could turn that sound off. It's been going on the whole meeting. Um, uh, with Councilmember or Vice Mayor Klein, um, and I attended the Public Arts Commission Workshop, um, which was really great. It's on, um, whether or not there should be art at the Broad Street Y. And they've launched a survey, um, which is really great to get feedback on that. Um, some people like the idea, some people don't. There's been a variety of feedback. I think you can get that survey on our website and the city's social media. Please check out that survey if you haven't already. Thank you, Public Arts Commission for taking that up. Adam and I had the Economic and Community Development Committee meeting this week. Was that this week?
Yeah.
Was that two days ago?
Yeah.
Wow. It's like a hundred days ago. Um, we covered a couple of topics and then, um, also, uh, we had a, a fairly decent turnout. We had a few people show up and we just kind of, um, went through all the feedback we received on the short-term rental ordinance and are preparing that, um, for its next phase. I think we're gonna hold a special meeting, um, of that committee in April so we can continue to move as we have momentum on that. Um, I would like to share with you guys that I was at an event on Tuesday and I shared a table with Supervisor Swarthout and she made a comment that said, "You guys are doing some really cool stuff in Nevada City." Um, so I wanted to share that with you because I agree. I think we're doing some really cool stuff here. And then, I know, right? Um, and then I just wanted to say a big thanks to Camille and Evan because I got to see some of the biochar, uh, kiln because our social media presence is so good these days. I mean, they're doing a really good job. Um, I hear it's mostly Camille and I gave her that feedback, uh, um, uh, one-on-one, but I just wanted to share it with the community. Check out, um, the city's Instagram. And I'm not sure, does that go over to Facebook too? I imagine it's all connected. Um, but just doing a really, really good job and keeping the community, um, abreast of all the cool things we're doing. Thanks, y'all.
If I could add to that real quick, the survey is, if you go to our homepage and go to the Public Art tab, um, the survey for the Broad Street Y is there. Um, shout out to Lisa for that one as well, because that's another one of her commissions. Um, also, I neglected to say, but fortunately the assistant city manager's in the background, um, they're reminding me, the Myers Foundry, uh, survey is also on our website. That one's easier to get to. Just scroll to the bottom of the page, see the giant QR code and click on it and take that survey.
Vice Mayor Klein?
I just wanted to, uh, to congratulate you, Mr. Mayor, on a fine meeting at the Myers Foundry. That was extremely well-attended and to, uh, thank the community for coming out in force, uh, because they care about that place. Um, it's exciting. I, I look forward to seeing what happens next with that. Uh, I also wanted to congratulate the mayor on bringing the trophy back from St. Perrin's Day, uh, the, the passy toss. Well, we were, I, I was standing with, with, with Haven, the Vice Mayor of Grass Valley, and we were watching you and the Mayor of Grass Valley competing. And I think we were making sarcastic asides to our. to one another, and then you triumphed. And then the announcer said, "Now we'll have the vice mayors." I was unaware of this. I almost didn't go, I was extremely tired, the day before was my birthday, you'll understand tomorrow morning. And, and so we were, we were made to compete. And thankfully, despite the fact that she's by far a superior athlete, luck was with me that day, and Nevada City swept, ladies and gentlemen.
Except for the planning commissioners who couldn't come to a decision in time.
Yeah, that was-
That seems appropriate.
It was so, the symbolism was smack in the face. To Lou's point, I'll just remind everybody within the sound of my voice that none of the people sitting here work for the federal government, we work for the residents of Nevada City. I didn't say citizens, I didn't say taxpayers. If you reside here, we work for you. All of us electeds swore an oath to defend the Constitution of the United States from enemies foreign and domestic, which I think is what Lou just did with his rant. So we're all concerned with you and we will do it together. That's what I got.
Thank you, Vice Member, Vice Mayor Klein. Vice Mayor Klein, we will be, to your, to your point, Councilmember Fleming, we will be following up with some of these issues. I believe that you all have received the resolutions from Tucky, and we'll be at our next meeting and we may have some other things to go with that, too. Somebody said to me today, "Well, how is this different than the other resolution you wrestled with?" And I, and the answer is that this one is absolutely grounded on our front door. So we've got some work to do and I think we'll, we'll figure that out. We're, we're good at that sort of thing. So that, thank you, I love that meeting at the Foundry. I've done a lot of those kinds of meetings, but this one was as energetic as they get. And it was really, it was really quite a beautiful event, and I appreciate the support of the council. Lon just did a fantastic job, city staff did a great job coming through, the Foundry staff did a great job. I mean, this was truly, truly a team effort and everyone was there could see the results. I think the most important thing that came out of it, we got a lot of data, purpose of the meeting was to gather information to guide our decision-making. But there was an alignment achieved between the, our constituents and our administration, the city and the community, we lined up, we all know where it's going. And we will keep working on it, no matter how difficult people make it, we will stay the course and, and deliver what I think our entire community understands is the right thing to do to ensure the future viability of the Foundry. So, so that's very important. I did enjoy, it was a lovely day in Grass Valley, particularly if you're a winner. I actually would just go on the record as the only person that landed my pasty on the tart.
Even hit it?
I landed it on it.
Oh, wow.
Adam says you did.
Mine was on it.
Yours, I'm sorry, I missed that, I was-
We're going to discuss this later.
I want to go to the replay.
I was so in my glory that I missed that, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Send you the video.
It's a very shiny trophy.
It was, it was quite, it was a lovely day and a nice event, really, they take you very seriously over there, so it was fun to win.
Sounds like you did, too.
And then come back to Mardi Gras. And so, it's, and we are, we are doing a lot of great things. And I think, again, one of the things that stands out for me the most was our ability to, we rebuilt an entire city and created an organization that's nimble and agile and could respond quickly and timely in what could be a very difficult situation. And I've been a part of a lot bigger cities that would never have been able to do that, so we're really doing a great job. With that, I will entertain a motion to go home and-
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
You have more things to say?
Take it quick, go on, Bill.
Hail the light.
Okay.
Yeah, hail the light. Always the light. Stay in the dunes. Thank you all, thank you.